Alrighty, let's call this meeting to order. Angie, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here. And John, could you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, bless us tonight as we consider the business that's before us. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Alrighty, we've got a couple changes to the agenda. We want to move the administrators' report to the end of new business. And then, we'd like to put greater grass at first item under new business. So either change all the numbers or make it number zero.
Never make that way.
Any objections to any of that?
Move the agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Public comment. Anyone like to address the commission?
Yes, sir.
Please step forward. We've got a mic here so the people listening on YouTube and stuff can hear you good.
How much time do you have?
Three minutes. You know.
My name is Thomas Andrewman. I'm running the Republican Party for the 92nd seat. Let's refresh to hear the end of the. I'm waiting to find out whether or not I'll be backed by several pro-life groups. I've got confidence that I will be. I've spent my retirement raising cattle and I lost it because everyone was getting on it. Last year, I needed to hire somebody. And Grandpa just decided he's had enough of what's going on in Lansing. It's exemplified by last week, majority of Democrats and Republicans voting in favor of a ballot initiative, which in essence will undo the term limits that been prior established in the state of Michigan, allowing anyone in the House to serve 12 years and anyone in the Senate to serve 12 years. They want to play a little math with that, but I think that's in some total what we're up against as citizens. I've been told that to win this seat, I just need to focus on Union Township with Mount Pleasant, but I live out in Ag District and Sherman Township is Bella County. And I've hunted on farms in Grasham County for the last 30 years. And some of the best people I've ever met in my life have went beyond those farms. I think everyone should have representation. Grasham County now has a core of five townships in the 92nd district. And I promise you, I will do my best to represent each and every person here in this, in these five. As far as the commissioners, I know all of you don't live in the district for the 92nd. Statistically, you probably don't. But I want to, I want to know that you can trust me that I'll be a good neighbor. I've had a lot of people in Isabella County tell me they don't want their townships ending up like Union Township, for good reason. So it's been a pleasure to be here. I appreciate your time. And you will see me more and more down here. I'm going to Dorvador. And I intend to win this. I feel I have the most experience. I've served two years in Iraq, a year in Afghanistan, had multiple administrative positions in my career. And you'll see me again. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Also, I'm also Republican county chairman and we meet the fourth Wednesday each month. I'm sure we'd all like to see you come to that meeting one of the times.
Wednesday?
At the Alma Library.
I'll be there. Thank you.
Off commission subject. Alright, anyone else like to address the commission? Chris, you see anybody online? Or Matt? I'm sorry, Matt. See anybody online?
That's alright. Nope, I don't see anybody connected in right now.
Okay. Alrighty, let's move on. Consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything out of the calendar and discuss it? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second.
For.
Support by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Okay, next. Commissioner, now we're moving the administrators' reports, so commissioners, committee reports. John?
I'll start with Parks and Rec. We always have our meetings the day after the second commissioner meeting of the month. So I had to call Pete this morning and get an update. At the last meeting, we didn't have any applicants for the seasonal jobs, the seasonal positions. And what we typically have is the two managers at Reed and Houtcher. And then we have typically a staff of around 16 with 12 employed on the weekends. You know, 12 covering on the weekends, then others to cover. We didn't have any applicants and we were starting at $11 an hour. We changed the salary to $14 an hour to start. And now we've got a pool of 16 applicants and Pete believes four have been hired and perhaps another two that he thinks, as he's screening them, is he's going to be recommending them. But we've got a problem with the managers because the managers, Parks and Rec does not directly control the salary of the managers. The managers is controlled by the county, their county employees instead of Parks and Rec employees. So at some point, we're going to have to figure out, because they don't like the fact that the beginners are starting at roughly a frivolous salary. So that's being talked about there. I've also had a airport committee meeting. They have made a decision to change attorneys. And the, under the last attorney, they did not like his cost. So we've gotten a new attorney and believe that in 90 to 120 days, we'll have some type of situation that we will be voting on as far as whether the airport authority essentially becomes a county-run authority. I probably am going to try to take some time over the next few months to talk with you individually and just make sure I know what your concerns are, what your thoughts are. And I kind of like to do it one-on-one so I get a gist of what everybody's thinking. And then, when we talk as a collective group, you know, hopefully we'll have things geared to an acceptable place, but we'll see. Thirdly, I was contacted by someone who attended a We the County meeting and told me about a commissioner who spoke there in very disparaging terms about the county. Talked about embezzlement, talked about having a forensic audit. It seemed very egregious and very smearing to me. I did not like any of the sound of it. It just felt like the whole county had been slimed. Now, it's one thing to do that. And I don't know of anything in place that's going to trigger a forensic audit. However, it's another thing if a commissioner has knowledge of some kind of criminal activity and is not coming forward with it, intending an August primary surprise or intending an October surprise. If there is such a thing out there, I would very much appreciate it if that subject would be brought forward. And if there was any other commissioners that was attending that same meeting and they did not speak up when these comments were made, I feel like that is just as bad. That's just as bad a situation. I'm very proud of the county. In some ways, when I came on the board, I was somewhat of a patsy myself. That came on very suspicious of everything. And what I've found since I've been on is that everyone is very open, very transparent, very available. I can ask questions till I'm blue in the face and they say, do you have more questions? How else can we help? What else can we do? And I'm proud of the county. I'm proud of how things are going. And I would very much appreciate it if there is any knowledge of any criminal activity going on, that it be dealt with immediately. That's all I've got.
I'd like to speak to that just briefly. I mean, we've heard that for years. I've heard that for four or five years. And we had a discussion, Sheriff and stuff. My thought was, the story is, there is criminal activity. And let's catch them.
Right.
And if the story is, there isn't any criminal activity and you're going about saying there is, then you're probably not fit to be here. I mean, because you're doing nothing but spread rumors. And the person, that person is, comes with some thought of authority, some thought of an inside track of a person. You tell the average person on the street and they'd say, well, that's a county commissioner. They must have an idea of them. And so I kind of believe something's going on. And we've had that discussion face-to-face. And it's kind of a sad thing. So the story is, if it's true, let's do it. And let's catch them and let's get it wrapped up. And if it's not true, then maybe that person out there looking at something different. So I think it's not doing nothing but disparaging this county, but the bulk of us are trying to get this thing moving forward. And I think we've done a pretty fair job in the last five, six years I've been here.
I agree. I think the role of a leader is to try to make things better rather than try to tear things down.
People in this county look at us, we've got the inside track and stuff. We say something that's not right. Still look at us, we got the inside track. Change back to your, change back to your Park and Rec, no. The manager people, you said, we hired them, they work for the county. What do they, they just work like part-time? I mean, they don't work in winter, do they?
No, they just work part-time.
Part-time employee of the county itself.
Correct.
So I say, okay. Well, I guess I thought they were all out of the parks and they just kind of managed to.
Yeah, me too.
So we would actually hire like a manager. They needed a manager. They would come here, Tracy would hire them, or how would that work?
We have individuals already. They're working.
I mean, they've been here. Yeah, I understand that. I guess I just didn't know if you needed one. The county would hire, Tracy would hire?
Imagine would go through the HR, you know.
Yeah, I believe.
You onboard them through the.
And so when we have upcoming union negotiations, these people could be involved. They're somewhat affected by that. The other, the only other thing that we have going on with compensation is if someone is a good worker, has a clean record, attends all the time, never written up, at the end of the season, they can get, I think it's a 25 cent an hour bonus for, you know, a job well done.
I thought you hired kids. Or do you hire adults?
It was our, I think it's, it might be 16 or 17. But if an adult wants to be hired, yeah.
Alrighty, any other questions? Thank you, John. George?
Okay, well, I had, I have to check my calendar because it was in a lot of places last week. So on Monday night, I went to Hamilton Township and North Star Township for their meetings. And that my district, a lot of the meetings happen on the same night. So it's almost impossible to get to every meeting. A lot of times I'll just go to one meeting one month and the next month the other meeting. But it's just one of those things. And on Tuesday, Tuesday, I went to a Commission on Aging meeting in the morning. And then I went to Lafayette Township and I went to Ashley Village. And then I had a planning commission at City of Vittica last week. So that was, that was my week.
Alright, thanks, George. I don't have anything. Jim?
Yeah, I went to Breckridge meeting. That would have been last month, no, the last Monday of last month. And I went to one meeting at St. Louis. And basically just, there's that issue with the drains and stuff in St. Louis. And I talked to Mononar's office today. And I'm going to send the last month when we, the last meeting that we had, we had the papers sent to us from St. Louis that told all the stuff they needed to do for the drains and stuff. So I'm sending that out actually to Mononar's office. I talked to Kurt Giles at the City of St. Louis and he's going to send one on to Rick Altman, Pat Altman and Graham. Is that his first name, Graham?
Graham Fuller.
Graham Fuller, yeah. I can never think of which it is first. Anyway, to see if they can get money to do the drains in St. Louis. And they need to be done. It's, we're hoping that, well, because of the times, everything has gone up in cost. And so that's put a pepper on it. So anyway, I've had conversations. And then also, I've been at Bethany Township, too. I don't know if I mentioned that from the last meeting. But there's a difference in, well, first of all, there's, they have level four prison. And those numbers are usually around 1,000 plus. And this last time they did the census taking, they were down to 466 people. So I'm on that board. And so I called out, talked to the secretary to the warden. And she assured me that it's never been under 1,000. And so I've called back to Bethany Township and given them the phone numbers that they need. And they're going to contact the gal that goes there. They have one special person, I guess, that goes there. And they don't do the whole census taking at one time. They have to do it quarterly because there's too many people there at the prison and they have to get a lot of information. You know, one of the things I wasn't sure of, and I didn't ask, but they're going to follow up on it, is do they take this number, do they do the census taking every year or is it just every so many years? And so that was another question that we had on it, too. But anyway, when I talked to them last week, in fact, they were over 1,200 and it's never been below 1,000. But according to the state, it is 466 and half that is what they would get their revenue sharing from. And so they're looking at $80,000 every year that they would lose. And so that was one of the things that I worked out for them.
Sam?
Since we last met, I've been to Sumner, Newark, New Haven and Fulton twice. Probably everybody's just kind of getting their road stuff done, getting things rolling along. Fulton's a little different. There's some still struggles there that they're working on and the windmills and stuff. And since they voted that down. I was there last night till about 10 o'clock. I don't, looking forward to what they're thinking. I kind of left shaking my head.
Just curious about that. In Arcadia Township, they have reduced the amount of miles that they're stoning this year. You know, that they're putting gravel on. And I've had two people call me from the smaller, smaller roads or very little sections of roads that are saying, hey, we're being ignored. What can we, you know, what, how can we get some attention? And I'm just wondering, are you getting that?
We may. Because at Sumner Township, they said they're chip sealing everything in their little community there. They're, it's like a little town. I mean, it must, I don't know how many streets they got there. I probably got like six, seven streets.
Maybe it does.
Maybe it does the streets. So they're not going to put any gravel on. They've made the decision, just going to chip seal everything in that little community of a town and they aren't going to put any gravel on. So they may be getting those calls. I think everybody else is kind of doing what they're doing and they have kind of a schedule. And I think they do it with the county road commission, you know, like we did this one here, you know. And apparently they bring them, shape them up. I really don't know a lot about it, but the county shapes it up. And then the other thing is really big is if they're spraying it with brine or something, how many miles of that they can do and how much money they have.
And see, that's what I understand is the miles slowly being reduced. The brine is being reduced from three applications to two a year. It's just a little, because it's getting more expensive.
I think the gravel itself is getting more expensive. The way they talk, especially in Sumner Township. I, I thought you probably just hired the county to do it, you know, the road commission. And they went to Charlie's and got the gravel. But these guys up there are buying it from some other park or somebody else, some other gravel pit. And I think the county still doesn't, and they must pay them separately for the gravel or something. I don't really understand how that works, but apparently the road commission still does it. But everybody else, I just know they've shortened it up and they've got them shaped up and they put so much money into them. They just have so much money. Some of the places have a little more money from ARP that they're redoing some roads in Culver's and stuff. And the county does that. Apparently they get bids on it. So I believe, listen to the road commission folks, it sounds like they're busy right to the end of the season to do a lot of this work. But in Sumner Township, they may get some more of that because they're not putting any money in the roads outside that little community. They're going to chip seal everything, I guess. I probably would imagine the town, that road commission will do that, too.
I would encourage that person to do two things. Go to the supervisor, tell them their concern. And then go to a meeting and voice their concern. Because it's all run through the township. County won't come to your township unless you pay them, the county road commission. So that's where that's all driven from. And there's nothing that anyone else can do about it except for the township supervisor and the board. And if they figure, feel they're getting shortchanged, then they need to talk, they got to go to the supervisor and then ask, and tell them you're going to go to a meeting and talk about this. Because that's, that's the only way to get anything done.
And I think a lot of that road business is really kind of done before winter, you know. They, they kind of figure out how much money they're getting and things like that and what they're going to put into it. And I think then they, they get whatever, I think probably, this is just my thought, is that the price per mile changes or whatever, you know. So the guys from the road commission says X amount of dollars and then they figure out how many miles they can do and what road they did last. And then just call them and say, give me six miles, these are the roads I want.
You got to remember, yeah, you got to remember the townships don't run on the same budget year we do.
Yeah.
I believe it's May 1st to April 31st. And that's how that works. They've already got their budgets in place. So whatever, whatever they're going to get this year, they've already planned it out. About it's now for next year. So that's one of the big things they do between, you know, November, January and February is to get all that together. Because their budgets have to be done. It's, it's a little late for this year.
Alright, thank you, Sam. And we're on to new business. Greater grass it up first.
Couple of things I wanted to talk to you about tonight first is a letter here from Energy. And what that, what that states is, just to give you a little background about it. Quite a few times, I should have been a little sooner than that. Casey was going through our numbers to do the wind cap. She said, I think we've got a problem here. So we're looking at it. We actually first thought that, and this was to do with the Polaris one, which was Lafayette, Hamilton and North Star. We first thought that John Hartman had the thing right. Called him, he sent it to us, the form, and now he did it right. And as we looked into it, we found that in Lafayette and Hamilton, they had not done the form right. And when I say that, because the end of the year, it wasn't completed project. So it's a partial project. So on the form, when you calculated it for the assessor, they had to cut the values in half, didn't do that correctly. So started looking, turned into a major accounting, tried to figure it out. Had numerous meetings. I mean, it was between Terry, a great job with it. Casey, we've done a great job. We came out, had never looked at this. And then also Ernst &amp; Young, which is a large accounting firm that works with Inventor, came up with a figure of how much was overpaid. And so basically taxes and Inventor, you paid $384,999.93 and overpaid their taxes. And we went through, talked to them, did a bunch of calculations with it. And then in addition to some of that, we found that there were a couple of substations and other pieces that were not properly figured out at the time. Not proper, it's not the right word, just the right calculation on it was done. So in any case, when we're all said and done, that's why these guys sitting over here wrote us a big check because they're not asking for their money. So the county and a whole bunch of us are getting a $384,000 gift from the wind companies. And then on top of it, because of the changes that were made, they still owe some more tax, which is $60,122.53. When we talk about the wind projects that we have here and being partners with the wind company, this is what I would call the example of a really great partner that paid taxes, but didn't want to come back to a bunch of townships, folks, schools and everybody else, you owe a bunch of money back because of a calculation they didn't make was done. And so they're forgiving. Almost way over these guys, a big round of applause, frankly. I mean, there's a whole lot of them, folks. That's, that's going beyond being a good partner. That's a lot of doubt. From that standpoint, it's where we stand with that. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Casey, who really spent a lot of time going through this and figuring it out. Good thing she has long hair because she pulled a lot of it out. When I take credit for this, you have to understand, I get no credit for whatsoever on the thing. This is her baby and she did a great job. And then speaking of that, just real quick, let's don't tie any more of our time up with it. We did the calculations for this year. And this year's tax payment that we have, and this is this other sheet, we had to modify it. She got too long. So this is also Casey's work, which we've done a nice job. But the taxes that are attributed from the wind farms and so far in the county this year come to $12,891,159 last year. So crack the 12 million number, which is a huge thing. We all had to remember, we're going to climb it up. And then, because we're going to come, we'll start down the peak on it from that. But it's still going to be the projects that we have. This doesn't have anything to do with the Heartlands project that we've been diligently working on with these guys. You've seen them a bunch. And hopefully, we're going to still put that one on top of this, will be that. And so it brings our total, since we've been involved in wind, to just shy of 71 million. People generally have no idea, you know, the impact that that has with it. And one thing I would kind of like to make sure that everybody understands, because I hear it a lot of times from folks, where's all that wind money at? That wind money at? That wind money? But you have to understand, it's tax dollars. It's no different than anything else. We collect tax dollars on it. Every year, there's a financial statement put together by the county, which is audited by Yo and Yo, handled by Chris and others, show you where the money's all spent. So we think about it. I often laugh that somebody thinks they come in, there's a dollar bills and there's a little windmill stamped on them. These are wind dollars, not that. It's all revenue that we take in. So we, we think about it. I often laugh that somebody thinks they come in, there's a dollar bills in there, little windmill stamped on them. These are wind dollars, not that. It's all revenue that we take in. But we're fortunate enough that we've had these projects here. You know, it's, you know, what's the total that we're at now in size of projects through five?
We've got five total.
Yeah, dollars.
Oh, in terms of investment? Gosh, probably almost a billion.
Yeah, that's, that's the kind of money that we've talked about in that investment wise. It's a huge amount of money. And uh, just, our county wouldn't be in the same place right now if we weren't into renewable energy. So I do highlight it. I know some have problems, some don't like it, some believe in it, some don't believe in it. We just try to make our way through things, but you come up and see those flashing lights, you know, that's, those are power signs flashing. So it really is significant to us. But uh, I don't think anybody has any questions about it. They're online now, the numbers too. Uh, this, this would be the total of three hundred and forty-five turns. And then we'll see what the, hopefully the last group comes, comes through with. But uh, it's.
It'll be close to forty or four hundred?
Uh, no, we'll be north of four hundred.
Okay.
So uh, I'll have our attacks. I can see that. So we're seventeen in the plan. That is the plans to have, be the total plan on. But uh, again, that's the, the circumstance we have, but uh, so when we talk about partnerships, though, I do, I can't highlight it enough when we talk about how Inventor G's been a good partner. You know, they try to fix things when they aren't right. You do, we get complaints. There, there's always going to be complaints for various projects of these sizes and magnitudes that happen there. But uh, just to give an idea that uh, that uh, three hundred and eighty-four thousand is. Questions? Help you with it? Something else come to mind? Be happy to. If you want to dig into the numbers directly, uh, my name's Casey Zane. Thanks.
All righty, any questions? Okay. Next up is uh, agency on, area agency on aging, uh, Bob Brown. He online? Do we need to come back to him? All right. Nancy, I guess you're up then.
Afternoon. How is everyone today?
Good.
Good day.
Sorry I couldn't be there in person today, but I wanted to draw your attention to the state grant for fiscal year twenty-three. And before we kind of go through those numbers real quick, um, a lot of it's going to stem around um, something that I mentioned back in March to you guys when I was briefing you on our numbers is um, a veterans community type center. And we have named it the Hero Center. And you should have a PowerPoint slide that kind of describes the mission, the services, how we're going to fund it, the why, the when, when we're going to be operational, and then where it's going to be located and also our project committee members. So you all have that in front of you, I hope?
Yes.
Yep. Wonderful. Okay, so um, I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things on that. And the important thing is, why are we doing this? And I think that um, attributes to the mission. Because we want to make sure that our veterans have a safe space that they feel safe in, that doesn't have other temptations with it. So we want to honor them and their families and be able to create that safe space to reconnect with our community. A lot of veterans have issues um, about how to reintegrate into the community itself. Because a lot of their neighbors, if they've never been in the military, sometimes it's hard for our military members to reconnect. And that is what the space is going to give them. Not only services as far as from our offices, but from a lot of different other sources in our nonprofits that we've been working with. So I just wanted to kind of bring this to your attention because some of the monies that we're going to talk about in the fiscal year twenty-three is going toward this initiative as well as um, the amendment for the change notice number three for fiscal year twenty-two. So I just kind of, I'm going to brief you later and about another probably month when we have more details about the whole program and how it's going to work and so forth. So, but I just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview of the program itself. And um, before we went into the actual numbers. Is there any questions on the slide itself for the Hero Center? Okay. So um, if we want to take a look at our fiscal year twenty-three budget, unfortunately, um, well, it's still fortunate because we still got quite a bit of money. We got fifty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars for the state grant. Um, so that's pretty decent. So my, um, our director, V S O supplemental initiative, that in itself takes up thirty-seven thousand dollars and forty-nine. So that takes up a pretty big percentage of it. And then we go into advertising, which I will tell you has been working fabulously with our Facebook and our Instagram. We are averaging roughly five new veterans per month um, starting since January of this year, twenty twenty-two. If we keep on this pace, we will be um, pretty like well above what we have in the past, from what I can tell. I mean, there's a lot of, we're not comparing apples and apples here, oranges and oranges. So I am piecing together some historical data to try to get you some better numbers. But at a first glance, we are on a fast pace in our increase of reaching new veterans, especially our younger veterans, and getting them back into our office so we can help them when they're at a young age versus at the eleventh hour. When they're at ninety, we want to make sure that they get their benefits sooner than later so they can enjoy it and have a better quality of life throughout their lifetime. So advertising has been huge. We're spending about fifteen thousand on advertising and most of that is with the Facebook, Instagram on person who does all that information for us for contracting. Our community outreach, that part is going to be part of the Hero Center to help with our punch list and utilities and so forth. And that will be two thousand dollars of that will be used for the community outreach and then the field of honor in the Gresham County Youth Fair. Memberships and subscriptions, these are required items that we need to function as far as our memberships to keep our accreditations, along with like DocuSign to send out um, where people can sign their documents if they can't get into the office or in our cell phone numbers as well, our cell phones. Training, that's of course, uh, when we are going to go to the national conference, we usually get scholarships for the spring and fall conferences. So those are usually paid for, for the Michigan Veterans Association. And then our last item is our Veterans Emergency Assistance Program, which um, we have a thousand dollars and that will be in conjunction with our solo soldiers and sailor relief fund as well. We have quite a few food voucher programs. We have the Meyer coupon, the gift cards from the Elks, and we also have vets, our food for vets is another food program. So that equals out to be the fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. And that is how we plan on spending our money upon your approval.
Nancy, can you explain why it is you need them to approve this budget now as opposed to in uh, August or September and that corresponds with our fiscal year?
Absolutely. Um, so the state is requiring us to have this um, budget sent into them on May twentieth because they're trying to get ahead of the curve and get this into the state to be signed off quicker. So we can get our money sooner, um, when it starts the new fiscal year. And then they can redistribute any funds of people who don't get their money. And so right now they have um, what they call letter of intent. And then depending on who turns in their actual grant application, then they'll redistribute any funds that weren't used. And then it may come, more funds may come or drop down for us.
I will approve this budget.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bunting.
Any discussion?
We need a roll call, excuse me. Well, we don't need it, do we? All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Thank you.
Nancy, can I have your phone number? I need to call you. I was over at um.
Probably leave it for you, Jan. We're public.
Yeah, I need to call you. I ran into a lady that is with veterans over in Midland and they have, they train dogs.
We train three months right now, ladies and veterans that they're working for. And so I told them that we get a rule of duty and we have to nation.
Okay, I will have Sue um, drop a note off to you right now with my phone number.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Also Angie says, uh, we need another motion for fiscal year twenty-two.
To, to um, for the change notice number three for the chair to sign.
Um, yeah, you can do that or you guys have already passed a motion that says the chairman can just sign off because all we're doing is redistributing funds. But I'm more than happy to talk about that if you have the time.
If you wanted to.
So is that, was that part of your motion, Sam?
Yes, I have her handle, yep.
Heard that motion.
Okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, and then I'll sign this. Okay, without objection. All right, next. Uh, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
And uh, next, uh, looking for Charlie and Brian. You come up to the podium. So I got a big note here. It says, everybody's got to go up there.
Good afternoon. I'm Charlie Perkins, District Court Administrator. Today represents my first opportunity to appear before the Gresham County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. Myself, Brian Wagner. Brian's Project Director of the Mid Michigan Specialty Courts appear before you today to request authorization for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three grant applications for the Mid Michigan Regional Sobriety Court and Mid Michigan Regional Mental Health Court. We also request authorization for the chair to sign grant contracts once the awards are received. Because I'm sure each of you are aware, our specialty court's been instrumental in rehabilitating countless Gresham County citizens and also reducing jail sentences and the associated cost of taxpayers. All these benefits to Gresham County come to the county via grant funding to our specialty courts. And we request that you approve these, uh, these um, requests and thank you very much for the consideration. Brian is here to, today to answer any specific questions you may have regarding the grant application.
Explain, please. In other words.
It's going to say yes to a grant, but it, it, not in specific detail, but in generality, what's the grant for?
Okay, so these are uh, continuations. Our um, Mid Michigan Regional Sobriety Court began as the recovery court, the D W I court back in two thousand and ten. We regionalized in two thousand and fifteen, so it's a drunk driving court. Um, we divert folks out of uh, standard tracks probation into high intensity uh, supervision and treatment. And so as a result, we're um, helping folks get back to, to work, avoiding possible prison sentences and uh, lengthier jail stays. So they're out. Um, paying their child support, uh, paying their taxes, staying employed, not losing their, their houses and jobs, et cetera. So um, the state pays for these grants. It's really a continuation of, of what we've done the past ten, ten years. Um, uh, the mental health court, very similar. Um, these are regional programs as well. So we partner with our surrounding counties to make these happen and, and partner with the other courts. So uh, mental health court is the same. Uh, we're looking to divert out folks from the, the jails and uh, and prisons that are severely mentally ill, working with Sheriff Morris on, on both programs as well. Um, and so we partner with uh, Gresham Integrated Health Network and, and three other uh, community mental health in the region to, to assist with that. So, so uh, not, it's not a significant increase over the last couple of years. A lot of, a lot of it's related to, to the cost of goods that are increasing the inflation. So yeah, so we're at about two four, two hundred and forty thousand that we'll be requesting from the state on the sobriety court grant and about three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the mental health court. So again, no, no uh, um, obligation from the, the county, no match on that. It's just a straight grant offered by the Michigan Superior Court.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion that we would uh.
Authorize me to sign it?
You sign it. The F, F Y twenty-three grant application, the treatment of uh, sobriety and mental health court. And authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second it. A motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, uh, I believe we need a, oh, Michael, uh, you, you got a motion for us or a? I've got, oh, Awareness Month. He's not here.
It does look like.
Okay, anyone online to handle that? I can't pronounce it, something Awareness Month.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. Uh, Mike is a very good friend of mine. Mike is a very good friend of mine and he has this disease. And there's very few in the United States or the world that has it. And um, he got involved after he found out and he was diagnosed as having this, he got involved in trying to get it out of him through the open. So now there's not one in the world that has it, but someday there could be. And so it's just a, an awareness, I think, that's um, um, to let people know that, that there's um, a disease like this. I'd like to make a motion that we um, um, approve this this evening to make this a resolution. Two thousand, it says twenty-two dash two eighty-seven. I can't pronounce it either. How do you pronounce it, Mike?
He spoke last year.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
You have, I'll score that.
Okay, all right. A motion by Commissioner Bunting, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any dis- a discussion?
I, I just, I had a deja vu feeling about this. And so he, we did this last year too. But he was here last year.
Yeah. Okay.
Last year, I remember I'd been.
Yeah, oh, yeah. All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Very good. Motion passed. Uh, next, Tracy, you're handling a new lawnmower.
I sure am. Uh.
I have it too.
Uh, yeah, but that's going to be kind of a surprise. I don't really want to talk about that yet, but uh, I'm actually handling the next three issues, so I thought I'd uh, come in. I can hear you a little better if we have some discussion. Uh, yeah, we do need a new lawnmower. Um, the one that we have is I don't know, seven or eight years old. We, the, the problem with it is it keeps breaking down. So there's a point at which, kind of like our cars, at what point do you just say, I give up, it's uh, better uh, money better spent to, to get a new one than to keep repairing this one. Uh, and that day has, has arrived in my judgment and Tony Miller's judgment. Uh, we got three quotes uh, for you on a mower. Uh, the low quote has come in from Hudson. I believe this is the outfit that bought out Vators. Um, this uh, these are the uh, mower specs that uh, our buildings and grounds folks tell us. Um, they'll do the job for them. Uh, so low quote is in from Hudson. It's a John Deere. Hudson gave us a government discount, which uh, we sure do appreciate. Uh, their quote comes in at, or they're bid frankly, uh, nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five. Uh, they have uh, set one aside for us. They had just two last week and they've set one aside, put our name on it. So uh, requesting that you approve purchase of the mower from Hudson. This would be paid from, from the capital improvement budget.
Tracy, this is a different mower than we got from Ellen's several months or a year ago.
As a tractor.
That was a tractor, okay.
For the dump.
Yep, different machinery. Not just out, not just out at the dump. It gets used at the dump, it's general purpose. We use it to clear snow. We can move rock with it, it's a multi-purpose machine.
Do you have a motion?
I'll take, I make a motion that we accept a Hudson bid.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed.
We should, like, participate in the Christmas parade this year, the tractor, Christmas lights, okay. Next, then.
You're volunteering to drive it then?
Yes, haven't you, yes, haven't you, yes. All right, I could move on to the chiller, if this board is ready. I placed a memo, or Tony placed a memo in the, the packet for you. This issue actually came to you on the 15th of March. We brought you three bids for replacement of the chiller. And what that thing is, is that great big box that sits out there by the dumpsters. And this machine, this unit, is responsible for the cooling of all of the old building, the old courthouse. Angie would like to tell you about the importance of a chiller and air conditioning on those 100-plus degree days. So, and perhaps even, Angie could make the motion this evening, but.
Yeah, I can.
Yes, anyway, we're really, we're being caught in this current economy, that's, that's the bottom line. But back on March 15th, you awarded the project to low bidder, AC Building Systems. We checked their references, it was all, all great. We contacted the vendor the following day, two days later, to say, congratulations, you, you have the job. And at that time, he told Tony that he could no longer honor his bid, and in fact, he was increasing it by $9,000. Never had that happen before, so that's kind of interesting. So, we've needed to take another look at this. And, and his, his, his reason for doing that was that the unit itself had, had gone up in, in cost, so he's passing that along to us. Well, I, I don't know. What, what we're asking you to do tonight is to rescind your award of this job to AC Building Systems, and instead, award the project to Smiley. Although Smiley is still not the lowest bidder, and we provided you a sheet showing the previous bids, the, the costs now, and you can see how those stack up, but although Smiley is still not the lowest cost, we've worked with them in the past, we have a good relationship with them, we, we trust them. Second, they've agreed to hold their revised costs of $101,000 for this project pending your approval tonight, so they'll hold this through tonight. And although they increased their bid amount also, they had the lowest, the least. It was by the least amount. You know, as Tony has looked at this, he has wondered, how is it that the AC Building System amount could go up by $9,000? And he wonders if maybe that was a well-thought-through bid. We don't know, but, you know, he, he bumped it up a good 10% almost of the project. And frankly, that just didn't go over well with us. We haven't worked with them before, so it certainly impacted Tony's, Tony's trust in them. So, we're asking you to rescind the award to AC Building Systems, award this to Smiley. And this also would be paid from the capital improvement budget. There'll need to be a budget amendment at some point here going forward. Chris will address that with you.
I'm over, rescind the bid to, from AC, and award the bid to Smiley Plumbing Heating for $101,000 for the chiller.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, or by Commissioner Bailey. I have one question, is, is this the same piece of machinery, the same brand of machinery?
It is the same or it's equivalent.
As I recall, this is that out there or something. I remember looking at it when we did it.
Does everybody in each department control their machine? Just turn it on, it just fools everybody's.
This is for the old building, correct?
That's what I'm saying. Are there individual room controls? I don't believe there are. They have a kind of a central control. Their mission control in there, they can actually adjust certain areas of the building, but no, they're not individual controls. So, the same or the equivalent machinery, we're not with this getting better or worse. Tony is satisfied that this meets the needs. Also, Smiley has a relationship with one of the subcontractors, so.
But we are being asked to spend an additional $5,700 over the low bid. If I'm doing the math right.
We are.
We are.
If we did that once, and we do it again tomorrow, does he go another 10?
Yeah.
Let's get the thing fixed. Or maybe decides, two months from now, he can't come, because it raised the, I guess, if this guy's all in the bed, I think we just get it done, it's gotta be fixed.
Any other discussion? And we should have a roll call. Okay, Angie, you'll call the roll.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you very much for that.
Can we go back to Bob Brown from the agency, Area Agency on Aging? Is he available or online? Okay. Then we're moving on to, Angie, the rest, your regular report.
I've decided to spend the time on the administrator's report tonight, talking with you and going through the list of projects. We have a lot that's going on, that's not unusual. I think so over, no, I know so. Over time, we've become somewhat more organized, and some of the projects we're doing, we now have a cyclical carpet replacement schedule as well as a cyclical painting schedule. And we had staff that just wandered all over the building and noted where we have carpeting, the condition of it, and in that way, we were able to prioritize what's in the worst shape, what might be a safety hazard, and so forth. Every week, I meet with Tony Miller, Tuesday morning, 10 o'clock. We go over a variety of things, but we also run through this project's list. There are some things that crop up now and then, so there are things that are being worked on, usually smaller things that are not included on this list. And frankly, sometimes we just remember something that we hadn't previously remembered. But this is really the core of what we're working on. And it's all taking quite a bit more time this year, and we're getting a later start on some things. You know, there was some illness early on. We have this little virus that's going around. But also, we have things just like this chiller project. You know, it, it's like, oh my gosh, we can't believe the labor costs and the, the equipment costs and so forth. And I'll go over one of those in particular with you. But I don't need to give you every detail about every project, but I thought I'd mention a couple of things to you, and I'll take any questions that you have. Unless you ask me about the specific make or model of a chiller unit, that's just unfair. Okay, chiller, we talked about that tonight. The rooftop units, that's the HVAC for District Court and Board of Commissioners and the jail rooftop. One is underway, another's going to come to you later. We're working up that, those, those bids now. So, see, those things are, we've got a timeline from, on the jail rooftop HVAC unit, you've already approved that. The vendors, the contractors hoping to get underway next week on that project. Carpeting and painting, I've mentioned that we've got the cyclical replacement schedules, prioritizing those as I've described. Carpeting, the work has already been done this year. We, you know, the projects we selected and the amount that we placed in our capital improvement fund, that's, that's been done. So now, we're looking more closely at painting. On painting, we've also created the completed projects list, which is much too short now, but as the season goes on, we're going to start adding to that. The Veterans Office has been done, work is underway at the probate offices, we're doing that internally. Actually, we did the Veteran Services Office internally. And, I don't know, we may go after the probate courtroom this year, but we'll see. Which leads us to the Circuit Court courtroom and the rotunda. We had hoped to include the probate paint job in, in the cluster of jobs, the same vendor to do the probate courtroom as would do the Circuit Court courtroom and the rotunda. That, there are painting issues. The Circuit Court courtroom has areas where there's water damage. There's plaster that is coming apart. And actually, Commissioner Smith noticed, he dared to look up when he was in the Circuit Court courtroom in these last few months, and, and he noticed this as well. We have solicited bids for this. It closes, I think, this Thursday. Yeah, it closes this Thursday. We had walkthrough periods, two successive Fridays, the sixth and the. Need folks to come in, and we would have someone available to walk through, look at the project, answer questions and so forth. And we had no one come in to look at the job. So, while someone could, I suppose, submit a bid between now and Thursday, we're frankly not very optimistic. So, we have a challenge, I'm not sure what we're going to do about that, but that's the sort of thing that we are running into. But I want you to know that we are pursuing that work and, and trying to get something done. Now, that's a historic part of the building, beautiful part of the building, it has to be done right. We don't want, you know, just anybody going up there on a ladder and slapping some pain dogs, so. We haven't even gotten that kind of a bid, but. So, know that that is a priority, we're looking at it, and we're just gonna have to think about what Plan B is if indeed there is not a bid by closing on Thursday. The building facade repair, this is something I've actually had on the list for three or four years. You may notice, especially the lower parts of the exterior of the building are beginning to fade away and flake, and, you know, layers peel off. Given where it is, I suspect that there is salt hitting it, and there is salt that is eating away at that pretty fragile material, that sandstone. So, we, when we spread the salt, it's done with a spreader, so it goes everywhere, and if your window is open, I can tell you from experience, it will come in your office, and you'll even find it in your hair at the end of the day. But I digress, why would I tell you that? But we now, so it's not terribly precise where the salt goes, but we're now actually going back and kind of sweeping it away from the building, knowing that that is a contributor. But we don't want this to get too far out of hand. You know, it's a, it's a, it's just a jewel of our community. So, we have sent out bids for that work. There are other areas as well, but it's particularly those lower levels. We want to catch it before it gets any worse. We solicited bids. We actually have two, two prospects on this, which is pretty amazing. We have someone who did the work in the past, I don't know if it's been 10 or 20 years ago, and he's still around and has interest, but Tony Miller was actually contacted by someone else just this morning, who has a lot of interest in the job and some experience with this type of work. So, it'll be very interesting when we, when we receive those, those bids. So, to have two out there, even as prospects, is very, very encouraging. The basement, this is one thing, becomes another, becomes another. I have mentioned to you in weeks past that we had a leaky pipe in one of the file rooms. We had this great idea of having pipes running across and putting paper files right underneath them. We thought, I guess, we thought we'd see how that works out. Well, when we had a leaky pipe, you might imagine how that worked out. So, we got that pipe fixed, and that, that was good. At the same time, though, or right around that time, the court, the staff in District Court were complaining about mold. They felt they were becoming ill. They thought it would perhaps be attributable to mold, so we had that tested. And no, there are not unsafe levels of mold. We've got that taken care of, however, in that room and the one at the other end where there are some mechanicals, water softeners, and other things. The, the, the report indicated, well, it's not a toxic level now, but that is something that you're probably gonna want to take a look at and take care of sooner rather than later. So, we're kind of thinking about that. The, the floors, so we've been looking at a variety of solutions. Those that might treat molding areas, how do you deal with it? You know, Kalen and I have both put some time on this, into this. But, you know, both of those floors are covered with old carpeting. And carpet in a damp basement is a pretty likely host for mold. Yeah, yeah, I think we, so, we're going to, the approach we're gonna take is we're going to tear that room, the carpet out in that room. And there are actually two rooms where there are files stored. One has a variety of, you know, district attorney, district courts, register of deeds has some materials in there, and the other is mostly district court files. We're going to have the carpeting taken out in both of those rooms as our initial pass at just trying to address some mold. Now, that will have to be done properly, right? You know, proper circulating of the air, not having molds spewed everywhere. But, and this is where one thing begets another. That's pretty old carpeting, and what's beneath the carpeting? Oh, I worry about asbestos. And I don't want anyone, certainly not our folks or contractor, going in there and possibly encountering asbestos and an unhealthy condition. And nor do I want asbestos fibers to be, you know, then circulating, getting into our HVAC and circulating all over the building. So, step one is we are going to have the, the carpet and whatever is underneath tested. Believe it or not, that's gonna run us about $925, but, so it goes. Depending on what we find there, we would then want to, we will remove the carpet in whatever manner the asbestos testing tells us, that would be the next step, and discover what else is underneath there. We'd like it to get it right down to concrete flooring and concrete, bare concrete level, and have nothing there that could serve as a host for mold or anything else in the future. Then, we are running out of file space, file storage, and we'd like to have, relocate our files away from pipes, just seems like a thing we would do. We had gotten quotes on the filing systems just so we could see what we want. It's the type you turn, and they collapse, or they can expand, and it's an excellent way of making use of limited space. Those numbers came in at a level, though, that we're, we're just not gonna do that in the immediate future. But whether we do that now or later, those floors need to be dealt with before we want to put new filing systems on top. So, that's a lot of description about a single project, but that's taking up some time. We're needing to think through the steps and do things in order, and certainly to keep everyone safe and well. So, I hope we make it look easy. Like, who knew all this work went into, to all of this? But, trees and landscaping, Building Browns wants to have annual inspection and maintenance of our trees as opposed to our coming to work one day and G1 fell over. I want, yeah, and the Health Department needs some dead shrubs pulled, so that at some point, we'll probably be rope around a shrub, pickup truck, done it, we'll see what happens. So, that, that'll be a great day. Maybe we can make a county event out of that as well. Now, let's go back to the Health Department. The big project. Many months ago, I came to you, Aaron Losack from Spicer, I think he was appearing, supporting the discussion electronically. We indicated that there was pretty significant HVAC project that needed to be done at the Health Department, along with some ventilation and temperature, providing some kind of heat in the restrooms during the winter months. Quite reluctantly, but I continue to be grateful, you approved, from the ARP funds, up to $500,000. Quite reluctantly, but I continue to be grateful, you approved, from the ARP funds, up to $500,000 for that project. And the expectation was that this would be a $300,000, $350,000 project, that we would be able to give some money back. But we wanted that cushion because there were a few things we didn't know, and I didn't want to have to come back and seem like I was just going to chip away $100,000 at a time. But, you know, we thought that number, even when we added some window work and some lighting. Well, it took a while to get this out for bids because our consultant, Aaron Wosack, was working on another project and he was not able to turn to our work until the beginning of this year. We needed him to write up the technical specifications for us because there's a lot of mechanical work involved, electrical work, and, you know, the HVAC stuff is the mechanical. So, but finally, he got those specs written. We sent out a request for bids. And this was the basic work. It did not even include lights and windows. We got two bids back. One for $629,200, and the second of $427,500. So, once we caught our breath, Tony and I, Tony Miller and I, got on the phone with Aaron Wosack and, you know, sent this to him and asked him, will you look this over and identify areas? We might get a vendor on the phone and just try to negotiate. Hey, what if we didn't do this? Or what if we were with a lesser unit or, you know, something? So that we might be able to negotiate this down to a number that seemed narrowly reasonable. Aaron came back. He's great, you know, a response like this. Aaron is really, really a great guy to work with. I will summarize his page of eight-point font this way. "In general, pricing is exceptionally high and doesn't coincide with any historical measure or estimate." He could be a politician or a lawyer with that kind of language. Going down further, "I would not do this work at this time. I don't see this market sustaining itself, so perhaps if we delay the project or do it another time, I mean, a little bit better." Tony and I set a meeting with Liz Braddock. We met with her yesterday or the day before, explained all of this to her, and, you know, she gets the facts of life. So, okay, we'll delay the project. But we also talked about, are there any pieces of this that we can pull out and go ahead and do now? And Liz, what is most important to you? And something that we could possibly address now? And we're going to, Tony is going to gather some information on getting some heat into two of the restrooms. One of them is a, you know, baby changing room. So, you know, if it's 20 degrees outside, it's 20 degrees in the restroom, I gather. So we're going to look at that. Also, the ventilation fans just don't work, and we don't know if it's the motor or some wiring or something. So Tony's going to look into options for that. Because you don't want to just have these portable heating units that you plug into the wall. That's just not safe. And that, any, you know, fire marshal anywhere would lose sleep over that. So that's what we're going to look into. But I want to give you the update that we are going to delay a major HVAC work at the Health Department with Liz Braddock's, you know, reluctant approval of that. And we're going to continue to watch things and see if things begin to come down. If they continue to go up, I don't know. There's a point at which people are just not going to be able to pay for these projects anymore. And so the demand on all of this is, we could think, would influence pricing. So, what we are also going to do, and what had been set aside as a separate project, they're getting some flooring done there. And with the ARP money, we could contribute, and it ends up being only about $15,000, I think, that we're contributing to getting some flooring done over there. They're footing the bulk of the bill, or they put it in, I think $40,000. And, but we're going to help them get that done, helping them, Liz had essentially done the procurement. But that's also another piece that we can help to get done during this delay. So, the Health Department project has never been simple, and it's certainly gotten more complicated as time has gone on. So unless you have questions, that would end my recitation of some projects we're working on, but status of those.
We went over a lot of projects and a lot of pricing, and we found out with the Health Department that some of the pricing has skyrocketed. So the other projects that we're looking at, I have to assume that they're going the same direction.
In doing these projects and considering priority, we are doing some assessment of what just can't wait. And the Chiller is one of those that just can't wait. The jail HVAC unit, that's already been approved, and, you know, that's been a cyclical schedule because, anyway, there's a story there, and I think I've told it in the past. But that's absolutely right. And so we're looking at these things, and maybe there are some things we can delay. The courthouse facade, we'll see how those bids come in. Maybe it's higher than we can really tolerate, and yet that's something that already has been put off for, you know, four years or so. So that's absolutely right. We have to look at each of these and factor in and consider that, no, now is not the time. And as is the case with the Health Department work, I'm going to ask you, please, to leave that ARP money that you had approved for this project, still keep an earmark. Because we have time. We have time. We don't have to spend all of this in a day. And the scope of this project is such that, you know, it's going to cost a little something even if prices begin to come down, or costs begin to come down. But that's a long rambling response, which is just to say, you're right, and we're keeping an eye on that. And what can wait and what really needs to wait. Also, painting, most of what we're doing in-house with that in mind, so we're going to save some money there.
Except for the courtroom, that scaffolding. And it looks to me like there's going to have to be a lot of plaster.
Yes. Plaster and painting, first of all, at that kind of height, is not something I want our folks to be doing. But also, this has to be done by a restoration person. So it's not, I mean, you don't want to send me up there to do it.
I assume that we had a bad spot in the roof itself and it leaked?
Yes. You've already approved the work and that work has been done.
Yeah.
Because, you know, Ryan had been talking to me about this spot for a few years, and my response was, well, great, you tell me where the water's coming in and that we're done with the damage, and then we'll address the ceiling. So, but yeah.
There's one right there they could catch.
Yeah, yeah.
I see that every time I come in.
I know, and it's hard to not see it, once you see it, right? But we've got some spots like that, just don't go in this room, okay? Just, you know. And as always, please, Commissioners, will you please just look forward, not up? That will help us a great deal. But no, we're aware of these spots, and, you know, the first thing you have to do is figure out where the water was coming in. And you're approving this work that was done two years, three years ago? We finally figured it out. It was CUSIP who figured out exactly what's going on there. We got that fixed, and we haven't been taking in water in the same places since then, yet.
About two weeks ago, it was rain, rain for about two days, it rained hard. I had a fever, so I couldn't get here. They weren't having a car. So I went, I knocked on the window upstairs, and the lady, I said, I want to go and look at the courtroom. Where you, it really doesn't matter where I am, I just really want to go look at the courtroom. And so I sat there probably 10 minutes, and there, and it's still dry, you know? So I think they got that repaired, but it's going to take a big job to get up there. It's high to do that.
It's going to be scaffolding, and yeah, once they get up there, they're kind of Leonardo da Vinci, they're going to be working up.
The real tough part's going to be in the rotunda part. I mean, that's really going to be down. That's...
And we're going to have to, you know, once we do that, we can't close the rotunda because there has to be traffic. So, you know, there'll be a lot of a safety piece on that, too. So we need someone who understands that as well.
The other thing I ever threw out on these bids is, you look at, we hired Spicer to give us a detailed engineering of what we wanted. When you get bids, two bids, they come $200,000 apart. I mean, we've asked for the same nuts, we've asked for the same bolts and the same equipment, and $200,000 apart. That's a big number, I think, on a $600,000 project or $500,000 project, whatever the number is. I think you need to wait on that. I think you really, I don't think a lot of these guys, they got a lot of work, you know, and if you wanted to come right away. And I think by being the county, they'll pay a little more. I just think that we really need to wait on that.
On the contrary, we're actually finding contractors for just about everything to be so busy, many of them are not even bidding on projects. And the belief about one of these, I need not say which, was, because it was almost crayon on the sheet kind of thing. This is, and, you know, maybe, maybe no one else would bid, and maybe we would go with that number, but we don't think it was a very thoughtful, thoughtful bid. So, because, yeah, I mean, that's quite striking, isn't it? First thing is like, oh, let me catch my breath after seeing that number. And then the other, the next thought is, but, you know, why?
And like I say, the real thing is, is that we had somebody put the specifics together, a 2342 unit here, and so put that in. It's not like, I'll put this one in, you put that one in, and we're deciding on pears and apples. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I talked to a guy from one of my buildings today, and he said he knows a lot of guys who not answer their phone.
Right.
Just not answer the phone, they can't think any more work.
They are, and that's kind of the thinking then. At some point, this bubble, things have to level out. That the costs are going to get so high, people are going to stop doing projects, as we are doing with this Health Department, and then maybe things will begin to level out a little bit. So, but we don't know the future, but, you know, there are decisions that have to be made, knowing the present but not the future, and I think this is the right one. Other questions?
Okay.
I got a parallel question. Let's say, through ARP funds, we made a large amount of money to a township that was very tight financially for a project. And let's say, when it came to do that project, there's a 30% price increase. And so they cannot do it without additional funds. They can't do that project. We have written a contract with them specifically for that project, can't be used for any other purpose except that project. Am I saying that right?
Essentially, although we've written a contract for the project and the amount of the award. So how that would get handled kind of depends. If they're going to change their use of it, they at the very least need to let Chris know because we have reporting responsibilities. And at that time, a decision could be made as to whether we think that's dramatic enough a change that we need to bring it back to this board. If they find that they can throw, they find monies somewhere else and they can add to it and do the project, great. If they want to come to you folks and ask for more money, I mean, if there's anything there, they could do that. If they find at the end of the day, though, that they just cannot do the project and have nothing else that they, you know, can do with that money, then those funds can come back to the county. But, you know, different purposes. I know we talk a lot about roads and the townships, and, you know, the way we fund roads for townships, you didn't ask me, but I'm going to tell you, I mean, it's just such a problem for these townships. We've got to figure something out. But you folks have really not wanted to fund road projects. So if the township came back, just providing you an example, if the township came back to us and said, well, we'd rather spend it on roads, that's something I'd want to bring back to you and let you folks play in. So that's where it just kind of depends on what the circumstances are.
My understanding of it was that if a township come and said, we want to do this project, Project A, Project B, and Project C, and they were all $30,000 apiece, and we awarded them $90,000. And when they got Project A done, Chris would fund that project. They would say, we're done. And if it was a $50,000 project, we put 30 into it, and they put 20 into it, and it's done, we'd fund our project. They still have 60 coming, and for these other two projects. But I thought if they changed the project, then it probably would affect us.
Again, it depends on how dramatic the change is. You know, if they want to change the type of shingles on their roof, I don't know.
Something like that. I mean, I'm just saying, if they were going to put in, you know, put a well in, and they decided, well, we're going to, we're going to paint our buildings and do something different, and that was to go to a well, I think they would come back.
Probably should, and I think we probably would suggest that. The kind of thing from the reporting standpoint that we watch most carefully is, are they going to wander into something that we fear might not be a legitimate or approved use of the funds? That's, first, that's what we're looking at. But then, and it's been good to hear the discussions you all have had. I cite the road issue, because it helps us in making some of those initial judgments. And that's what we do, we make initial judgments. But then we talk to you about it. It's not that we're back there deciding all kinds of things, and, you know, and I hope that's understood. But we often get this information first, and we kind of have to figure out how to route it and what to do with it, so.
JP Morgan, the investment bank side, I believe today made a prediction, by the end of the driving season, gas would be $6.20 a gallon, and, which is roughly 30% higher than where it is right now. But they did not foresee 30% across the board inflation for everything because there's going to be a lot of demand destruction. So some things could plummet in price. So as far as like, taking the wait-and-see path, I think is a good idea, because some things could come down quite a bit.
It's prudent for right now.
Yeah.
The next six months will tell us a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity. This is not something I've done with you in the past. I come and talk to you about projects when you were ready to go and want you to approve something. But I do want you to have a feel of the amount of thought and time that goes into this care that we take in identifying and prioritizing projects. So I really appreciate your attention. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. On to a request from Washington Township. Howard.
Commissioners and Ms. Clerk, thank you for allotting me some of your time this evening. As I understand it, in your, Howard Whaley, I'm the supervisor for Washington Township, late and behind the eight ball, I guess, we have put together some, I believe you have the packet, we put together some repairs that we're going to try and accomplish for our township hall. Foundation repairs, electrical update, and carpet replacement. And we have a request there for $39,809.62. And there's a, we do have some ARP funds. We plan on using the second half of those funds for a office addition to the township hall, utilizing closet space right now for our election equipment. And we've allocated some of the initial funds, our fire protection services and some other things, within the township. There are some exhibits, there are some pictures. I understand that the Commissioners have kind of frozen what they have, that they don't want to allocate any additional funds. Tracy is a kind of a tough act to follow. She's got a lot of fingers and a lot of pies. I know a lot of townships came in front of you and requested funds, and a lot of funds have been distributed. If it is unable to be done, I understand that, we are going to proceed with the repairs as we can. And if it is unable to be done through the Commissioners, then at least keep us in mind if some funds get freed up in the future. And I can't really ask for anything more than that. If we had made this decision three months ago, things would be different. And I understand that, and we're just plodding along the slow lane as best we can. So are there any questions for me based on the packet that you have in front of you? As far as the pictures or, our number one priority is to get the electrical done, because the electrical is not safe.
As one of the smaller requests, as you and I talked, you and I have talked about this and explained to you that at our last meeting, we, as a board, decided to hold those funds. And so, you know, and you stated it perfectly. If something falls out and you've got, well, you know, you're on the list.
Mm-hmm.
But other than that, you know, I can't suggest that we move forward with giving you the money at this time.
But I've got my camel's nose under the tent.
That's right.
I puts in the door. Like puts in the door.
That's right.
Yes, we're like, and like I said, we're going to continue to do the repairs as we can. We pushed off, you know, the foundation repair, but we've had some issues with the electrical and and we have already allocated funds for that. And we thought if we could provide to the to the residents better through the county, then we would attempt to do that. But like I said, if 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 it does, in the future, some funds are freed up, then you have our request in front of you.
Do we no longer have any money left in the ERP?
I believe we're just short of a million, right?
Yep, that money is all taken care of, currently.
Yeah, and I understand.
Doesn't mean that something might come back to us.
And and that's and that's kind of what my hope is. My fingers are crossed.
Right.
You know, we've we've got a lot of things going on in Washington Township right now with with wind and solar. And in the future, there's there's going to be more funds available, but it doesn't take care of the immediate need.
Right.
And so we'll work on it as we can, and I appreciate you taking the time and letting me speak with you.
Yeah.
Of course, the townships gets the smallest share of the of the money.
Yes. And and again, Tracy was a hard act to follow. She's talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, talking. But I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any unfinished business? And we need a motion to go into the finance meeting.
So a move.
Or a motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Bailey, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion pass, done.
Angie, do we have to start with roll call? All righty, Chris, I'll let you go ahead and take it away.
All right, very good. First on the dock is the director's report with the proper screen share this time. Commissioner Lemberman. Starting with drain prepayments on the on the TV.
Yes, yes, you are.
Yes, it is.
Yep. All right, we haven't had any additional drain prepayments that have come up in the last month. I did see posted in communications, though, tonight, there were a few hearings or a hearing that was scheduled for a potential project, so we might see one or two in the near future. Our OPEB balance has dropped in the last 30 days. We are now down under our $2 million investment that we put in. We are down 10% on the calendar year compared to the S and P, which is down almost 18 and a half percent. So we've seen a little bit of a bounce back in the past couple of days. But so far this calendar year has not been kind to investments. Our ARP funds and project list was updated. I stuck the list up under our communications so that you could view that. I will continue to update that and put that in every meeting. Our remaining unencumbered total amount of funds is $947,112. A couple of weeks ago, on May 6, I had, I was required to log into Treasury's website and request our second payment. If that comes exactly one year from the first payment, we should be seeing that, which they said it would be. We should be seeing that on May 20, which is Friday. So our second half should be in on Friday. We've been working hard creating contracts for each project. You guys had talked about what would happen if if the local municipality would change or the use of those funds from what the original contract was. And while the reason that I would have to kick that back to the board for approval would be because of the strict monitoring requirements that we have. The the federal government is requiring us to have contracts and then monitor the expenditures for those projects. So if they were to change what what they were going to spend that money on, we would have to draw up a new contract, and that would have to be signed by the board chairman. So it would come back to you if the project changed from sewer pump to painting the buildings like you you had talked about.
For that, Chris, I was I was curious.
Yep, and and it's not so much that the the new project wouldn't be eligible. It's that it's part of the monitoring of how the money is spent. And because we're giving it to a third party, we have to know exactly how that's spent. And that has to be approved by you. Another thing that we're requiring from the municipalities is that they fill out an ACH payment form, which touches on something else you had discussed. The the local municipalities may not have enough money to front payment for these projects. So what we're doing is we're trying to make same-day payments to them when they request reimbursement. So if they receive the invoice for a project and they email it to me, I can process that and electronically pay them. And if that's done before 3:00 PM, money will be in their bank account the next day. So they can pay their contractors. And technically, we are reimbursing them because they have already been billed for it. So that's just another level of monitoring and how we're trying to help anybody that might not be fortunate enough to be able to cut a large check for some of these projects. Another project that we are undertaking here in financial services that's just getting underway is we are looking at credit card payment processing companies. As we continue to modernize and accept payments from outs or residents.
Print the name and the signature.
The the individual departments are entering into contracts with different credit card payment processing companies. Currently, we have three different companies that we have contracts with. And the the treasurer and I are going to review these contracts and determine one specific company that that we would recommend that the county goes forward with instead of three different companies. The reason that this is important to us is when we go to reconcile our bank account, one of the most difficult items to reconcile are deposits from credit card companies because they're typically a large quantity of them and they're small, small amounts. Instead of a 500 or a $3 million deposit from the Department of Treasury for ARP funds, we're looking at a whole bunch of 10 to 50 to $100 purchases. For example, permits or for a to pay taxes or at the park for ice cream, they accept credit cards for that now. We'd like to consolidate that down to one company so that it's easier to. The last item that I have in the director's report is I wanted to talk just a little bit about the county millage review. Again, bring this back up. This project, if you remember, we left off with each of the departments or entities that received a county millage. They had come to the board meetings and presented to you their financials and essentially the programs that the millages fund. This this kind of got shelved for a little bit after that so we could wrap up audit and completed necessary ARP fund activities that that took the front row. So with discussions with Commissioner Lemberman, we are going to revisit the county millage review. And the next step for this would be to present different scenarios to the board to show how or what an adjusted millage rate would look like and how it could affect the revenues that would come in for those departments or entities. I was able to get some raw data to Commissioner Lemberman yesterday. But we have not had a chance to discuss that in detail, to see what it would look like when it will be presented to the board. One of the, still one of the largest unknowns related to this is the lawsuit for the turbine depreciation and how that will affect what what millages will need to repay from their fund balances due to this lawsuit. So we definitely won't be able to make any decisions without knowing that. Does anybody have any questions related to anything that I I spoke to in my director's report?
Chris, gorgeous. You just said, I'm 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 a little confused because wasn't the payback of the millage or 10% for everyone?
I'm I'm not sure that if it had been publicly discussed yet. And I know that there's there's meetings ongoing to find out exactly how much it would be. So at this point.
Yeah, we have townships currently voting on that. So it's it's knowledge, it's public knowledge.
Well, I have not been privy to any of this information.
Okay, all right. Well, right now, there's townships that have been having votes on whether to accept that 10%.
Very good.
I don't, no, I don't know what's happened. I just know that some townships have taken a vote.
I would expect then, once they would approve, all everyone would approve that, then it would come back to us and we would start working on some calculations.
Okay.
I think maybe consumers has to agree also.
Well, it's part of it, but the townships, well, we all have to agree that that 10% figure is what we want to pay.
I did have one item that I would like to discuss with the board related to ARP that came up over the weekend. And it has to do with what I would like to do. I would like to have permission to use ARP funds that we have set aside for COVID emergencies that we have that pop up at the county. And I'll give you an example of what happened over this weekend. I I think some of you are aware of what happened, but we had a some inmates that tested positive for COVID. And what we had done in the past before we we set a reserve on those funds is we would take these inmates and if they were not a threat to society or a threat to to go on the run, they would go, the sheriff would talk with specialty courts and get them out on probation and get them tethered. And those, the cost of tethering them and monitoring them was then charged to the ARP fund. So this happened over the weekend in order to help, well, to prevent a further breakout from happening. And I would I would like to know if something like that, that we can continue to charge these costs to the ARP fund. Another example of an emergency expense that could come up would be if we had a breakout in a department. And what we have been doing is bringing in a specialty cleaning company to come in and deep clean that entire department, that the offices before we would reopen. So if I could, I prefer, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback about that or from that. But if we don't use ARP funds, then we would we would need to look to use general fund money for that.
Chris, what do you need here? Do you do you need a motion to make?
No, no, we don't need a motion because it the money is budgeted. I just know your intent was not to spend any of it, and I don't want to spend it on some of these things that the county needs without your permission, without you saying that that's okay.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, if it's budgeted to do it that way, I think we should do it that way.
I don't have objection.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I mean, I think it's a legitimate expense of COVID-style funds, so.
There's an issue.
Is there, I've heard of a couple of the people that's been tested for COVID-19, but I don't know what the results is yet. But maybe wait another to the next meeting and then see what happens in our community and in the state.
Well, this is just for specific emergencies that come up here at the county as far as that cost us money that we would spend money on. Like I said, like cleaning an office or putting an inmate out on a tether.
I mean, we don't really know how much we would have spent on this all this. I would think that would come back to us and we can maybe budget it that way.
Well, these are immediate expenses. I mean, he wants to be covered in case the sheriff says, we've got to get somebody to do this, right?
Well, what it is, we work with OCC.
Yeah.
And to get people out.
Yeah.
That were not a threat to society, that you had to put on for a certain reason, we want to be able to track them. But they didn't have the money to pay for their their monitoring. So to put a specific dollar amount on it, no, because you could have more tomorrow, who knows? But Chris is just asking for permission to fund that if we need this past weekend and in the future.
Mike, how many people have you had so far that's had COVID-19?
A lot, a lot.
Has any of them, are they still there or did you have to?
I saw a lot there.
Have you had to take any to the hospital?
130, over 20.
Do you think it's worse than before or not as bad or the same?
We haven't had this bad in jail two years.
You haven't had this bad?
No, we have not. That's why I went to OCC last week, asking to try to get people out.
Would you say $10,000 is going to cover it?
Yeah, I think that's more than enough.
I would agree with that. That would be more than enough to cover for the rest of the fiscal year for sure.
We can't make motion around that.
Yeah, we can, we could discuss it when we come back in session.
Okay.
Right?
All right, bye. Okay, I'll move on then. I saw that Bob Brown from Region 7 Area Agency on Aging was on the agenda, but he didn't come in. What hap, we just got our Commission on Aging grants, and that's what he was going to talk about. And I'll just spend one minute going over it with you guys. Gracia County was awarded $250,000 that goes to Commission on Aging for all of their programs that they do. And they do such a great job. One of the largest ones expanded has been home delivered meals. $250,000 for Gracia, if you compare it to Gladwin, $228,000, Claire, $255,000, Isabella, $264,000. And we don't have the populations that they have. So we provide a lot of service to to our our elderly that that need help from the county. I'm really proud of this program. And just for comparison sake, I looked up what we got two years ago, and we got $238,000. So we got, they're they're just giving us a a cost of living bump every year. So that's, Bob was probably going to spend about 20 minutes going over the that program, but I can give you at least the numbers. So that's, Bob was probably going to spend about twenty minutes going over the that program, but I can give you at least the numbers. So I'm going to go ahead and move to our cash balances, I didn't see. Anything out of the ordinary in our cash balances for the month. Our general fund was down about eight hundred thousand dollars, and if you go back multiple years. That's the typical trend that we see between March and April. It's simply because. A lot of things are due on a cyclical basis, like every three months or every six months. And March just happened to be the the sixth month. Of our our fiscal year, so we pay a lot, we pay more bills. I'll go ahead and over to the check register, I'll give you a few minutes. To look over the check register and ask any questions that you might have. Commissioner Lumberman, if you could let me know when to move on. Or actually, I think after this. Terry might be up.
As far as the check register goes, Chris, did you see anything that gave you pause or made you look twice?
No, I did not.
I have a question for page six. The Gracia Integrated Health Network.
Mental health. That's mental health.
Okay, I forgot, that's where they changed their name.
Any other questions? Couple more minutes. If there's no other questions, I think we can move on, Chris.
Okay, Terry, I will let you. Give your presentation.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Good evening, everyone. You're seeing some additional information in your investment packet. And that is due to Commissioner Lumberman, excuse me, and I, working together to revise the way that they are reported to you. That was something that was asked for at the last finance meeting, so. Do you have any questions on on what you're seeing this time?
What we're trying to do is break everything down, investment by investment. So that we're able to see everything, and I think going forward from here on out. We're going to have a monthly total of revenue. Like, how much do do the investments generate every month?
For interest, how much interest do they accrue, or, yep.
John, I think you mentioned that, you know, T bills are are jumping way up, is that something we can put this money in?
Yeah.
I would have to look at PA twenty and make sure that that's compliant.
Right, right. Chris, you read my mind. Okay, so what what Chris put up there, this is a screenshot that I sent Chris earlier today. And this is a screenshot of treasury bill auctions. And so. Every so often, treasury bills are auctioned. And you can see there's four week bills that was last auctioned on May seventeenth. And they would have a maturity date of June fourteenth, and that high rate says six tenths of a percent. And you can, if, Chris, if you could scroll over a little bit to the right, I think it has like an average rate. But so.
Pictures in the way.
That's good, yeah. Could you put them up at the top?
Matt, can you take Chris's screen out of the way, please?
Put it up across the top.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so, yeah, it says high rate and investment rate on the side, now, this is. Just kind of. Let me talk this out a little bit. T bills, you have four week, eight week. Thirteen, twenty six, which is a half a year. And these, these quotes all come from treasurydirect.com. So a T bill is just a short term government security, it's backed by the full faith and trust of the United States government. Inflation is soaring so high that the Federal Reserve, at this point, sounds like they're pretty committed. To jumping the interest rates a half percent every meeting. They meet every six weeks, the next meeting is going to be June fifteenth, so we expect another half percent. So if we would ladder T bills. You know, some into the four weeks, some of the eight weeks, some of the thirteen weeks. And just, yes, continue to roll them forward into time.
It's going to be getting bigger and bigger, right?
So. I I think that we would want to take a look at that, and so another thing that. Terry's going to, what's the board meeting or the meeting you're going to Wednesday? I thought you were going to a training meeting on Wednesday that you could ask some questions at.
No, I'm getting together with Michigan class next, the beginning of next month.
Oh, the beginning of next month.
Yep, to sit down and. And go over some things.
Okay, so one of, one of the things that. That I'm thinking about is, you know. So I'm just talking out loud, I didn't have a presentation, but. If interest rates are starting to take off and run. We have a lot of investments. That are at fairly low interest rates, that are locked in interest rates. And one of our audit findings was about losses on the investment side. That, you know, they weren't being properly taken or or properly shown or something. And so a a question that I would have would be. Let's say we've got a three year CD that's paying a quarter percent. And we're locked into that thing for another two and a half years or another two years. From an individual standpoint, it would make perfect sense to take the interest penalty, get out and and redeploy. But I don't know if from a municipal standpoint, if, you know, if there's a a loss that we take in doing that.
We seek to talk about that.
Well, a a question that I would have when we get back into regular session is. I would like Terry to dig into it on her side. And what I would ask when we get back into session is. Perhaps if the board would give me permission to call Ally at Yo and Yo. And just ask a few questions like that to, you know, to make sure the board authorizes the phone call. And if we get some green lights, then at the next meeting. We could perhaps, or at the next finance meeting, we could come together and and say a plan, but. We could maybe look at all the investments on down the line. And say, hey, this one is worthwhile, we could get a lot more money.
And you, and you, you made a good point. These are done basically on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
So we would have to wait four weeks, what, if you can find out right away, the first meeting of the month. We can make a decision, if you wait, we've got another five weeks, basically, before we have a finance.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I don't know what, how many, how many, how many.
I think it's three weeks till our next meeting, so we should be able to get.
Sometimes we have that extra week.
Yeah, we should be able to get some answers, but the, just, just some ways that maybe we could generate some more interest income.
Yeah.
Off of, off of our portfolio and and by taking absolutely no risk.
Yeah. I I think it's, we're not doing.
Look at this list here, the Commercial Bank Michigan class, I don't see a maturity date, are those just rolling there?
Michigan class does, yes, that is twenty four hour liquidity in the Michigan class.
And then there's quite a bit of money right there.
Well, and that Michigan class, I'm going from memory, is that, say, six tenths of a percent?
Yeah, oh, point, zero point oh eight.
Basically, nothing.
Which is very common right now, or it was, now it's.
But that's a lot of that money we use. We're, we're using it every day, paying bills and everything else, is that the account? No, someone else, okay. Yeah, the, the heck.
So.
It's worth finding out, man.
If there's, if, if there's no other questions on the investments, we just thought, you know. We're going to take a look at this and see if we can make it work a little harder for us and have some more concrete. Ideas coming up.
Are there any other questions? Well, I'd like to thank John for sitting down with me and and putting our heads together on this, it was very beneficial.
Well, thank you, Terry.
All right, thank you.
I think that wraps up the meeting unless there's any comments, do you see anybody online, Matt?
We've got, we've got budget amendments to go over.
Yeah, we got into the budget.
So. I. I wasn't able to get the six month budget review to you guys, well, to the commissioners, and I apologize for that. But I've done one better, now we have a seven, seven month budget to actual review. I'm going to go ahead and share the spreadsheet, and then I'm going to read from the memo. So if you're wondering how or how the information is getting to you, that's what I'm doing. So I split this spreadsheet up into two sections, one is the general fund and the other is all the other funds. For the general fund, I'm not going to request any budget amendments. Now, you'll see that we have seven, seven out of twelve months equates to fifty eight percent of the fiscal year. Has passed, so anything that was around sixty percent budget expended or a little bit more. I highlighted yellow and I provided a note here for an explanation of of why it is where it is at. And just to let you know. I'm not requesting budget amendments for the general fund because I believe that we are on track. To fall within budget overall. And what I like to do for the general fund is reduce budget in one area to increase it in another. That way we are not increasing our budget overall, I don't, I I like, when we approve thirteen million dollars. For the general fund budget, I like to keep it within thirteen million dollars. The reason that I I'm really happy with where the general fund is at is because our three biggest funds. Which happens to be the Sheriff's Department, the Jail. And District Court are all right at. Right where they're supposed to be, fifty eight percent for District Court, County Sheriff, three oh one. Fifty seven point eight nine percent, the county jail, fifty seven point eight seven percent. It's just. Thank you, Sheriff Morris, that is a wonderful job, for the general fund. Your departments can make or break, and and right now we are right where we need to be. So what I have highlighted here is. This twelve thousand dollars at one hundred percent budget used, that's an interest payment that goes to. The delinquent tax fund for some funds that we borrowed from the, and and we won't have any more expenses in this zero zero zero. Our Board of Commissioners is at seventy two percent. That is because of an increase in turbine legal fees this year, there's been a lot of activity. Well, we are winding down the lawsuits, so we've been using our lawyers. A lot, so I I'm just recommending that we monitor that because there's a possibility that after a settlement. We won't have as 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 much. Expenses under that category. Our Register of Deeds, I actually found, we had an accounting error in there, there's thirty thousand dollars that was charged. To the retirement cost for the Register of Deeds. That should have gone to the prosecuting attorney, so. Once we caught that, we transferred that from ROD to the PA. And I I left those numbers and explanations in there to show you. And not only is this important, this process important for presenting to the board, for presenting to my administrator. And for the public, it's important for me to dig into this and look at it on on a. Regular basis because I can't find where we might have an accounting error like that. So our county survey and remonumentation. That is, the payments are completed for the year, so we won't need to do anything for that. Information management, which is our IT, they're at seventy five percent on the year. But that is because the very beginning of the fiscal year, we may, we pay the IT rate contract in whole. Which is about a hundred thousand dollars, so that would skew. The percentage of the budget used. Our Drain Commissioner is at seventy two percent, but we make our drain prepayments through that fund. We'll continue to monitor that, but I expect that that's going to come out pretty close to right on budget. And the very last one that I highlighted was our Insurance Department, and that is. On top of our insurance, we also. Pay for any of the vehicle accidents that we have through there. And we've just had a few more than I budgeted for, and that's something that I will adjust in the future. I think when I budget for vehicle accidents, I always want to be optimistic. And say that it's not going to happen as frequently as it does, but it happens more than I budget for, I need to increase the budget for that. If you don't know, we actually, we self insure. So any accident that Gracia County gets into, we pay one hundred percent of the vehicle repair. Because our insurance. Only offer has, has a ten thousand dollar deductible. So if we pay for the insurance, we still pay for the first ten thousand dollars of the vehicle repair. And. Almost all of our repairs come in under ten thousand dollars, so it's not worth holding the insurance for.
Hey, Chris?
Yeah.
Just while you're talking about that, Parks and Rec, they complain about the insurance all the time too. Because like if a tree limb falls and, you know, it's hits a stand or something. It seems like all of their damages that they have, they might have four incidences a year, but they're also all under ten thousand dollars. So it's like. Full amount, like the insurance is not getting. I I'm just saying if there's other incidences where we're coming in, you know, we have multiple things happening. Where we're paying the full deductible all the time, maybe that's something we could look at.
So. Tree limbs are falling on the vehicles?
No, on, on, like if there needs to be, if there's a concession stand. Yeah, or or an accident occurs, or, you know. They, they, they're telling me they have like three to four incidences a year. And they're, but they're always under the deductible. I mean, so they're paying the full load, the insurance is not affecting them, if I'm not making myself. I, just as the case with these accidents.
Okay.
I, I, if I could comment, you know, one of the differences is the. The insurance coverage for incidents that occur with the parks are not a kind of a separate part of. A policy, something that we can choose the coverage for or not, it's a part of, just kind of this general coverage. Auto coverage is something that we can opt in or opt out. And so that is a place where we can make a decision. But the the parks incidents really are not, they just, you know, fall onto the, so if we decided. No, we don't want to pay insurance for those sorts of incidents out of the parks, there's really no adjustment we would make in our insurance.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's the the difference there. You know, and they, at ten thousand, you know, they get us. And that, you know, so much of what we do and what happens is under ten grand. and that, you know, so much of what we do and what happens is under ten grand, which is both good and bad, you know, you understand, so.
They want you to pay for your own.
Thanks, Tracy.
You bet.
Does anybody else have any questions, um, in the general fund review before I move on to the other funds? Okay. Moving on to the other funds, just real quick before I get into the detail, um, the only um, fund here. Well, let me explain first. Each of these funds are, um, are, are isolated and have a, a, a special revenue source that can only be spent for a certain thing. For example, the, the central dispatch collects fees, um, uh, from phones that fund central dispatch. Uh, the sheriff Deputy Millich has a milage that can only be spent on sheriff deputies. Parks and Recs milage can only be spent on Parks and Recs. So each of these essentially has their own, uh, pot where they have a fund balance and they have money in the bank that is associated only to that fund. Um, so if they go over budget, um, with the, with the board's approval, they can go over budget if they have enough money in the bank to go over budget and cover their expenditures. Uh, and, and that's gonna be important in, in some of the, uh, requests that I have here. Now, it, overall, in my review of the other funds, I, I was extremely happy with where they were sitting. Um, the, the majority of them that are going over budget are for projects that have been brought to the board, explained to the board and approved by the board. So we just need to go in, 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 in the back door here and do the legal side of it and have the board increase the budget so that we don't have an audit finding. Uh, there was only one fund that is, will have a negative impact on the general fund. And that is Fund Two Eight Two, uh, Secondary Road Patrol. Um, and it wasn't anything that could be avoided, and the, the reason that secondary road patrol is going to go over budget is because they had a retirement. And this, uh, patrol officer had a leave payout that cost the, uh, county over thirty-three thousand dollars, um, and that wasn't budgeted. Uh, and at, at some point, we will need to transfer, uh, money from the general fund to the secondary road patrol to cover, uh, that. Um, the reason that I am not requesting a budget amendment for that today is because, um, I, I do not know which officer is going to replace the retired officer. And there are a lot of variables when it comes to salary and benefits, uh, that we have to budget for. So I don't want to budget for somebody who is, uh, I, I, I'm just waiting to see who replaces that officer, and then I will ask at a later date. So, um, I will start with the G I S fund. Uh, they are at sixty-seven percent of the budget used, and just a reminder, the fiscal year is at fifty-eight percent. So, uh, I'm just recommending that we monitor, uh, the expenses in this one. Uh, Fund Two Six Two Share Sales, uh, I am gonna request a budget amendment for this, uh, fund. And that is because it is a new fund that we just established probably a couple months ago. Um, this fund now tracks all the sales of, uh, items that have been confiscated by the sheriff's office. Uh, the reason we created a new fund is because there are laws that, um, dictate how this money can be spent. We were tracking this in the general fund and it was, uh, difficult. So we created a new fund so that, uh, the sheriff can run a report. He knows exactly how much money he has that he can spend on the required, um, things that the law dictates. Uh, previously, we didn't have, uh, many uh, confiscation sales. Uh, it didn't come up a lot, but in the, in the current environment, um, it, it's coming up more and more. So it, it was beneficial to set this up. Um, and so what I'll be asking for is an increase in revenue of thirteen thousand dollars and an increase in expenditures of thirteen thousand dollars for this fund. Um, the next fund that I highlighted orange is Two Six Four, the Local Corrections Officers Training Fund. I am gonna recommend or ask for an amendment in this one, uh, expenditures going up forty-five thousand dollars. Um, this fund i- is being used more and more by our current sheriff administration. Uh, what it is used for is to, uh, i- it pays for the training for corrections officers that we will be bringing, that we hand to work for Grashit County. And again, in the current environment, um, the, the job mar, job environment has, has changed to where in order for us to land these, uh, corrections officer recruits, um, w- we're using some of these booking fees that we, we get to help pay for their training so that we can get a commitment from them to come work at Grashit County. Uh, this fund still has a nine thousand dollar cash balance in it after the forty-one thousand dollars that has been spent this year. So it is, um, it will be, i- it will be covered. Uh, we talked about Two Eight Two Secondary Road Patrol. I'll skip over that. Uh, Two Nine Six, the Veterans Memorial Maintenance Fund. I am going to request a amendment for that. Um, I'm asking for expenditures to be increased, three thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, it was for a lighting project for the memorial that this board did approve. Um, and Nancy did a great job of presenting that to you and presented everything to you, uh, her cash balance, and, uh, we just need to go back and get the budget amended. Um, Pension Fund Liability. Um, you see that there was zero budgeted. Um, and that was just an oversight when we put the budget into the system. You guys, you, the commission, commissioners did approve um, the budget for this fund. We just did not enter it in error, and that has now been entered. The Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, Fund Five One Six. You'll see here, this one looks funny. Um, it shows up as a negative sixty-seven thousand dollars in expenditures. Obviously, that is not correct. So, looking into that, I found out that we had an erroneous journal entry. Well, actually, we didn't have an, we had a journal entry that was entered in twice. Um, once by Terry and once by Becky, by two different departments. So we reversed that out. And the true expenditure, um, total for the delinquent tax fund is twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and our budget was fourteen thousand five hundred. So I'm requesting an expenditure amendment increase of eighteen thousand dollars. Um, and the reason that we went over budget is twofold. One of them is the Yo and Yo Assistance Contract that Terry had brought to the board and was approved by the board. And the other is, um, is that our treasurer went with a new title check company. And this title check company charges, uh, more per check than the previous company did. So that led to, uh, an increase, well, um, that's why my projection for expenditures was lower. I'm gonna move down to Fund Six Nine Three Flexible Spending Fund. Uh, this is an employee contribution fund. Um, it's set up, i- i- it's like a health savings account. Uh, we projected twenty-seven thousand dollars and, um, we're going to have approximately thirty-three thousand dollars in activity in it. So I'm asking for an expenditure increase of six thousand dollars. Um, and this is good. Uh, I'm very happy to see that more and more employees are, are participating in our flexible spending fund. Uh, this is not the county's money. This is pulled out of employees' paychecks and put into this account. And then the employees spend that tax-free on it, health-related costs. Um, I myself participated in it for the first time this year. Uh, Seven Oh Two, this is the Wind Planning Fund. Um, I'm asking that revenues and expenditures both be approved to be increased ninety-five thousand dollars. Again, this is not money that is the county's, uh, Invenergy deposited ninety-five thousand dollars with the county to pay for engineering and legal costs for their most recent, recent projects. Uh, and when I did the budget, I did not know that they were going to be, um, sending us an, an, another large amount of money to, uh, pay for some of their, um, expenses. Um, Seven Oh Three Through Seven Fifteen, these are new funds that, uh, we were required to um, set up for this fiscal year. And they are also, uh, money that is held in lieu for others. For example, current tax collection fund, you'll see the state education tax will be collected from the locals. It'll be deposited there and then it will be sent to the state of Michigan. Uh, district court, same thing. They collect fines and fees. A portion of those fines and fees are required to go to the state of Michigan. So these are just holding accounts. They're called custody funds. Um, and I don't know enough about their operation yet to project what we'll need for budget amendments. But in a month or two or three months, I should. So I will bring that back to you. I have them down. It's just that they need to be monitored. Uh, and the last one that I have highlighted here is Fund Nine Five Nine, Michigan Justice Training. Uh, this is a grant fund, uh, which charge any eligible expense to this fund um, through the sheriff's department that we can. And then we submit it to the state of Michigan for reimbursement. Now, this, the, the reimbursement percentage from the state fluctuates sometimes, but we always try to maximize the amount we get from it. Um, and I'll be asking for expenditure increase in two thou, for two thousand dollars. Um, and it's mostly related to, uh, conferences that were attended. And I under-budgeted this a little bit because I based it on recent history. In recent history, we didn't attend conferences because of COVID, so expenditures are up more than what I budgeted for. Um, and that is my overview of the other funds. Uh, the memo contains all the information, um, that would be needed to be a part of a motion to approve the budget amendments, which would have to be done after this finance committee uh, meeting closes. Um, if you're looking for documents to point to for a motion, but I, I'm, I am open for any questions that you might have uh, related to the budget to actual review. And that is what I have for, for presentation for the commissioners tonight.
Does anybody have any questions? I guess that means you did an awesome job, Chris, because, uh, uh, we all got it. We all got it. It all sunk in. Uh, I guess, uh, Matt, do you see anybody online, um, for public comment?
Nope, nobody else is connected in right now.
I guess I'd like to ask for a motion to move back to the regular.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, as she carries?
Okay, we're back in regular session. Uh, I think, uh, we need to approve the financial report and then we need some budget amendments.
I'll move, I'll move the expenses.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey to approve the financial report. Second by Commissioner Lemberman. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. And then, uh, Angie, I believe you have a, an amendment for us?
Just read it, that'd be wonderful.
Okay, to approve the share of sales, revenue and expenditure, and expenditures by thirteen thousand. Local correction officers training fund by forty-five thousand. Delinquent tax fund plus eighteen thousand, flexible spending plus six thousand. Veterans Memorial Fund plus three thousand five hundred. Windmill Farms Revenue and Expenditures plus ninety-five thousand. Michigan Justice Training Fund plus two thousand. And was there a pension liability? No, I think that was it.
You got them all.
All right.
I, I move we do that.
Motion by Commissioner Lemberman on that. We support by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? We need to roll call. When Angie's ready, she'll call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Motion passed. Any additional public comment? Anyone online?
Nope, nobody's online right now. Thank you.
We got another motion.
Because did you want to give, um, Commissioner Lumberman permission to contact?
Contact, yes.
Yes. I'll move that we, uh, the board allow Commissioner Lumberman to, uh, seek counsel from, uh, Ellie Barnes Yo and Yo.
That cover it? Second?
You said you can support it.
Oh, I'll, I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. The other motion?
You want to approve ten thousand?
Oh, the ten thousand. How would we, how, uh, COVID-related?
Yeah.
Emergency COVID-related spending or something?
I, I would make a motion that we, uh, would take ten thousand dollars out of the COVID money that is currently left. And, and I don't know the exact number, but we, we would allow up to ten thousand dollars taken out for the use of, for COVID activities through the sheriff's department.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bailey.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. And Sheriff Morris, you feel I'd be sufficient?
Yeah, I think so.
What about if a department had a problem?
We haven't discussed any of that. It was all about the sheriff, right?
I think, I think Chris was also talking about offices.
Chris, can you clarify one thing? When you were, we were talking about the sheriff's office and being able to spend carpet money, that ten thousand dollars, were you also including something else that might happen in the courthouse?
I, I had phrased it as, uh, emergencies that would come up at the county level. Um, one of, one of the other examples I gave was if we had a breakout in one of the departments and we had to do, uh, we brought a cleaning company in.
If we don't use it all, it'll just go back into it.
I'll just take, amend my.
That's acceptable, uh, as a second?
Yes.
All righty, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Think we've reached the end of our agenda?
I'm hungry.
There was no public comment. And, uh, without objection, we're adjourned.